Okay, I want to salute the President. What do you need? What do you need?
Certified by the United States of America and it's to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under a individual, literally and just as well.
What's he? He's in jail. He's some kind of a salter, so he's salting somebody or something like that. First order of business is the minutes from September's meeting. Any changes or corrections? Anybody? Got to get a motion. Motion approved.
I'll second.
Mr. Lim, second. All in favor?
Five.
All right. Motion's minutes are approved. First order of business is Dan Ward, 69 Highview Terrace, Cold Spring. Applicant to seeking a variance to construct an eight-foot fence. Want to come up to the microphone, please? Mr. Ward. Tell us why you need an eight-foot fence.
I'm having, can you hear me? Is this on?
Is that mic on?
Okay. I have some issues, as I mentioned last week, with my neighbor and how I outlined in the packet.
That's a 59?
Yeah.
Okay. And give me a little more than issues. Got to tell me, last couple of years have you have?
Yeah, it's been like the last two years.
All right. Now, we talked last month, you said you might get an order protection. Did you try and do that yet?
Yeah, I have it right here.
You have an order protection?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We got a chance, make a copy of that and put it in the file so we have it.
Okay.
Okay.
How long has this been going on?
It's been going on for the last two years.
Two years? Yeah. No, I got eight letters here from neighbors and they all pretty much say the same thing. I'm not going to read them all, but they're in, they'll be in the file and they all pretty much say that your neighbor's been giving you hera, and them also. They've been getting a lot of hera.
Yeah, not just me, yeah.
Oh, and it's not just you, that I'm trying to say.
Oh, yeah.
Just a couple of questions. When I viewed the property, I guess the fence is going up behind the new garage you built?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's the garage we gave you the variance for, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, it's got to run the whole length of the property?
Yeah, just between the two properties and not along the back.
Not along the back?
No, just between the two properties.
Right. So what's like about, what, 60 feet or how long would that be?
Oh, good question. I think it's more than that. It's not going to be cheap. Yeah.
Do you have it down on your application, how long it is? Let me see.
Has your property been surveyed?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. That was a requirement for the garage I built.
Okay.
Yeah. So I got a fresh survey from Beatty and Watson.
There's a fence along the side yard, correct?
Along the side of the property, correct. Between the two, right between the two properties, me and the adjacent property.
And the address of the adjacent property is?
59 Highview.
59.
The fence is between 69 and 59.
Correct.
Okay.
Eight feet, well, you need eight feet instead of six.
My neighbor is over six feet tall.
He's over six feet. So you can look over the fence?
You get the picture.
The, let me ask you a question. I viewed the property. Whose generator and propane tank is that? Is that yours?
That's mine, yeah.
That's yours. Okay, so the fence will be on the other side of that?
Yeah, yes.
Right? Correct?
It would be, yeah, yeah.
I didn't see any survey stakes. Did you have that line survey?
Oh, yeah, there's.
You're there?
They're in the ground, yeah, there's three of them.
Okay.
There's one on either end and one in the middle.
So you had it surveyed?
Yes.
So I don't want you to put the fence, you know, mistakenly on.
No, I have a survey that Beatty and Watson did in 2019.
Okay.
So they went out and they staked the entire property, so I know exactly where the property is.
You know exactly where those stakes are?
Exactly, yeah.
And they're visible?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right. I see that your house is below the road level. You know, the road is pretty high and your house is pretty low. So I mean, I guess that's why, I guess what I have you, you have that burn for the new garage so the water doesn't go in the garage?
Uh, yeah.
Is that what I see there?
Yeah.
Other reasons, but otherwise.
Exactly.
So it's not going to be really noticeable from the road too much?
I don't think so.
Right. Are you going to bring it all the way up to the end of the driveway, to the road?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much, as far as I'm allowed to, yeah.
Yeah. Do you think it's going to, that's going to block any vision coming out of your driveway or anything else? That's my question.
Uh, no, because there's a hedge there already. There's a high hedge, it's about, the hedge is about eight feet tall, so that's on my neighbor's property, so.
Right.
That, I never back out on my driveway anyway. I always pull out because it's, you're right, if you're backing out, it's dangerous.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
Like they say, I have eight, eight letters here. I'm not going to read the names or anything else like that in this instance, but they're basically saying that, that they see that you've been having problems with your neighbor and they've been having problems with the same neighbor and all like that, so they all attest to that issue. Is there any questions for anybody? Any board members?
Yeah. Okay, you put an eight, eight-foot fence up. What is the goal? To keep them from looking in your property or throwing things on your property? What's, and I guess I'm asking, what's the end game? Because, you know, he could actually damage your fence if he, if you're not looking, you know?
Well, it's, you know, I just would like the privacy, you know?
Does, does he on a regular basis, well, has he walked onto your property along the property lines?
Um, he's thrown, as I mentioned in the packet here, he's thrown a lot of items on my property.
Okay. Okay, I just want to get it in the, into the record.
Yeah.
I think you said, told me to put a couch or something or some furniture on your property or something like that?
Yep.
So I guess you're trying to avoid that with the eight-foot fence?
Yeah, I kind of, I've been trying to get along with my neighbor. I didn't make any issue of that. I threw the garbage out, I had to pay to get rid of it at Royal Carding. I've tried, really tried everything to get along with this individual, but just, yeah.
Okay. Was there any?
Are you proposing? Plastic fence?
Uh, there's a picture of it in here.
There's a photo of it and it's a wooden, wooden fence.
It's going to be some type of wooden fence, yeah.
Wooden fence, oh, you're going to?
I'll put the, the four-by, pressure treated four-by-fours in eight-foot sections, eight-foot by eight-foot, you know?
You're going to, you're going to construct a fence yourself? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not a, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be an already produced fence? You're going to, you're going to make it?
Oh, no, I'll buy the sections probably.
You're going to buy the sections?
Yeah.
Okay. But I didn't see, the pictures I saw, I have never saw a fence like that.
Yeah, that was the, those are, it's like a Borden, it's like a, look at a barn-style fence, but, you know.
A stonkade fence.
Like a stonkade fence, but solid.
Yeah, I want to do like pressure-treated, you know, something, something like that, that I can take the sections off and stain every couple of years.
Okay. Is there anybody in this audience wants to speak to this? Make that a note that there's nobody else who wants to speak to this. What we go, what we call the five factors, okay? What there is, is five questions we ask to, you know, to help the board consider, you know, your variance, okay? So the question one, will an understandable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or will a detriment to a nearby property be created by granting the area variance? It's a question to you. Will, will a change, undesirable change be produced?
I don't think so. Like, I agree with what you said, like properties set down, so, you know, it's, plus there's a lot of, there's a lot of trees in the area. People have not clear-cut their, you know, their properties, so there's a lot of tree coverage, so I don't think it's going to be.
Yeah, no, I saw, I saw that you're really, pretty much down from the road, your house is also, I don't think it'll be visible. Can the benefit sought be achieved by some method feasible to pursue other than area variance? Well, that would be the question about a six-foot fence, okay? You know, could, would a six-foot fence suffice instead of an eight-foot fence? And that would be a question for the board to decide. Is the requested areas, is area variance substantial? Well, I'm sure there's a lot of people in Phillips Town who may had discussions, issues with neighbors, they've put up a six-foot fence and that was fine, you know? So I'm trying to say, we're trying to find a reason for the eight-foot fence. Yeah, that's what you, you know, that's what you have to explain to us.
Yeah, the, well, my neighbor is over six feet tall. That's kind of my reason.
And you think he's going to throw stuff over the fence and you think that an eight-foot fence, eight-foot will help you?
He's been throwing all kinds of stuff on my property. Brush, three couches, two mattresses, oil cans.
Eighty-foot fence will make it harder to throw the couch over.
Absolutely. Well, it's just that and he's, you know, he's.
I get a point with that.
He's taller than the fence, so that, you know, the privacy issue is just not going to, it's not going to be satisfied with a six-foot fence.
Okay.
I mean, if he was a shorter guy, you know, it'd be hard to argue that.
If he's shorter guy, yeah, yeah. Okay. Will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on a physical environmental conditions in a neighborhood or district? Well, I viewed the property, I really, I don't see that it's going to change the neighborhood or anything else like that. I don't, I think it's only person that's going to really be visible to is your neighbor and you're going to have to deal with that, so, you know. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? This consideration should be relevant to the decision of the board that shall not necessarily accrue the granting of the area variance. Well, I don't think it's self-created because if you weren't having a problem with your neighbor, I guess you wouldn't want the fence. You wouldn't go through the expense of having a fence.
No, I really don't want to go through the expense and work of doing the fence because, you know, I do all my own work, so now it's a lot of extra work, a lot of money, especially with materials have gone up and doubled, tripled, yeah.
Oh, yeah, materials.
It's not my first choice. It's my last choice.
It's seven feet? Why not seven feet instead of eight?
Uh, if you're going to go seven feet, if I'm going to go the expense of doing seven feet, I'd rather do eight feet, just, you know, just for good measure. He's, he's over six feet tall, so it's just barely making it.
I guess it comes in eight-foot lengths too?
Eight foot, they usually, they make six-foot and eight-foot sections.
Six-foot, eight-foot.
Yeah.
Seven-foot isn't.
I think that's the next size up anyway.
Right.
I think.
Okay. Any, any questions in the board? Okay. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Mr. Lim, second. All in favor?
All right.
All right. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Mrs. Stone?
Normally in a case like this, I would, I wouldn't support this, but this is a very unique situation with a troublesome neighbor, so I'm going to vote in favor.
Ms. Stone?
I agree with Vinnie. Normally I wouldn't vote for eight feet, but it sounds like you need eight feet. Thank you.
Venn?
I vote in favor.
Vote in favor. Like I say, we usually only give six feet, not eight feet, but I think yours is an extraordinary situation, okay? So we can always make exceptions and I think, I believe, I vote with, I agree with the board that this is the right exception to make. What I'm going to do is going to sign the, it's okay for you and you're going to be able to take that to the building inspector tomorrow and get, and we'll get your permit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
There you go. That's yours, okay? You're tomorrow and he'll be able, he'll be able to take care of everything you need. Good night. All right. I wish you a lot of luck. Okay. Our next one is Erica Widman, 14 Howland Drive Garrison. I saw the letter that you said that Mr. Lantini can represent you, so what I see here is you're looking for a one-story, 480-foot square addition, four addition, requiring a front yard variance where 50 feet is required and 33.58 is proposed. Further, the addition is a non-conforming structure, exceeds the provision of chapter 175-23B2, greater than 25% of the six, 1,650 square foot existing structure. So you'd need two variances. You need the front yard variance and you need the variance for the area. Okay?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I regret that I discover a little error with the calculations on the application. We were adding to the garage, which is 480 square feet. 25% would have only been 413. We couldn't reach the outside walls. We however overhung the garage two feet is where I've taken the front yard setback from, but the area is actually, instead of being 29%, we're closer to 30, 35%. So the actual structure is 576 square feet. I'm not sure how that affects our noticing or anything, but it's.
25, what'd you say, 39?
Well, we were, we were required to be no more than 25 to not need that variance and we were 480, so we need that variance.
Right.
At 29, but we're actually 35.
So instead of being 400, instead of the addition being 480 square feet, what's it going to be now?
576.
570?
576 square feet.
576. Yeah, Adam, you get that?
I did, and the enlargement is 35% as opposed to 29.06%?
That's correct.
Okay.
I was pleased when I was, they avoided bothering me to fill out the applications and I wasn't the one that filled them out and I'm not sure where, I think the 480 came from. It just looked like we were adding on top of the 480, but in fact, we had, we were overhanging.
Okay, so originally, okay, so.
29.6.
So instead of 29, it's going to go, instead of 29, it's 35, right? 35%?
35%, yes.
Okay.
That's a gross number.
Now, as far as the front yard variance, I went, I viewed the property, it looks like the house itself, the existing house itself is closer.
The existing house is 28 feet from the road.
Right.
Our proposal is still beyond that.
It's still behind that, yeah.
Yes.
So it's going to be over the garage there, correct?
Yes, it's still going to be over the garage.
Yeah, when I took a look at it and I saw it, it looks like there's plenty of room there, you know? The neighbors are pretty much spaced apart. I don't see that it's going to be a, myself, I didn't see there was going to be any kind of a disturbance to anybody, you know, a view or anything else like that, you know? But is, anybody in the audience wants to speak to this? Make a note. Guys will, I'll tell you.
One quick question. Is there going to, with the, is there going to be a change in the front yard setback?
No, that was correctly.
That's still remaining as 33.58.
That's correct, yeah. I took it off of a survey and measurements from a survey stating the 28 feet and then measured back to the garage and then back two feet more to the street. I'm confident that's correct. I, I looked at a couple of source, map sources, including Putnam County E- parcel and Bing, Keyhole, Google, and because of the trees, I can't always see all the houses, but they're all about the same line. I don't know that there's one house that's 50 feet setback on that side of Howland.
Well, like I say, all of them was notified, so if anybody had a problem with it, they would be here, that's for sure, you know? That's what gives people the chance to do that, so I guess nobody has a problem with it because they don't seem to, there's no, I haven't received any, you know, letters or emails or anything else like that, you know, so.
I think everybody that knows Erica likes Erica.
That's a good thing.
Yes, a good thing.
Not like the neighbor. We don't need a fence, do we?
Oh, no.
Okay, let me know if it's a fence.
Free haircuts to the neighbors.
All right. Okay. We've got to go to five factors here, okay? Will an undesirable change be produced in the character neighborhood or will a detriment to a nearby property be created by granting the area variance? And you answered here, I do not believe the structure will have a negative effect on my neighbors. I believe that because when I looked at the property myself, I don't, I don't see that it would. Can a benefit sought be achieved by some method feasible to pursue other than area variance? There is no other way but a variance because the existing house front yard variance is only 33.58. Explain that one to me. All right.
Well, we couldn't go any closer to the street and then we'd be furthering and non-conforming and the backyard sort of drops off. It's, it's, the site terrain, the Coto is a little difficult because otherwise we'd have to put an extension behind the house and that wouldn't be feasible to connect to the house. As it is, we have to do very little to alter the inside of the house. Besides, there's an, even though there may be always other ways, but the garage is actually almost 11 feet tall, so we're cutting the garage back down to the normal floor height. So in bulk, in volume, we're not adding a full story. We're adding closer to two-thirds of a story.
Okay.
In terms of the appearance of the house, it is a contemporary house and we are continuing with a contemporary roof. We originally had plans to make it look more of a colonial with intersecting gables and everything. It just wasn't the house and it looked too big. She wants to keep it looking modest and that's what I believe we've achieved.
Okay. Will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on a physical or environmental conditions in a neighborhood district? And your answer is no, and I have to agree with that.
Well, yeah, we're not touching the ground, so we're not having to dig or disrupt the earth.
Right. Apart looking at the project myself, I agree. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? They're all self-created because you're asking for the variance.
Well, we bought the house.
That's a trick question, okay?
Well, you know, it's not that we built the house and then, you know, asked for the variance. I think that's what they mean.
Right. The existing house has a one full bathroom and no storage. Adding an addition above the existing garage without shanting any foundation would give my family the room we need. I agree with that. Okay. Is there any questions for anybody, board members? And nobody in the audience, so at this point in time, make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Mr. Sisson, second. Is it all in favor?
I'm all in.
Okay, going to call for roll call vote, Mrs. Stone? I vote in favor. In favor? Mr. Lim?
I'll vote in favor.
I vote in favor.
And I vote in favor. Okay, you're all set?
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
No, I'll go nowhere. Hold on. Okay. Here, take this with you.
Okay.
This saves you a month of time. Take it with you to the building inspector tomorrow and you'll be able to get your permits.
Thank you. We're going to get it in for the winter.
Yeah, that's right. Get it in for the winter, before Christmas. Okay. Well, you know.
I thought we can be here for the holidays.
Hey.
I definitely be a big-minded people for this round, yeah?
I don't want to spend all, want to do whatever we've got to do. Okay, next one. Thomas and Karen Geisel, I guess, 41 Hudson Ridge Garrison. And tell us who you are, please. You want to go up there and just identify yourself?
She told me to take the mic.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, I'm Justin Kaker. I'm an architect with Highlands Architecture. My clients are Tom and Karen Geisel and we've designed an accessory apartment above an existing garage at 41 Hudson Ridge. Contractor filed with the building department and was denied because the property is off of a private right-of-way. It's not a town road, so that's basically why we're here.
Sure.
Can't see the whole thing.
This way?
Yeah, that's good. That's good. Thank you.
So you're looking for a 748-square-foot, one-bedroom accessory apartment?
Yeah, actually, I think the contractor must have had that in his application for building permit because those square footages, that square footage is slightly off. The actual apartment area with the stair is 537 square feet, so the apartment itself is 406 square feet and the stair is 131 square feet. So the stair going upstairs is going to be placed into the small bay of the three bays. So there are, I don't know if you've been there yet, but.
Yes, I testified, yeah.
So there are two large bays in the garage and one smaller bay, which has a flat roof over it.
Right.
So we're intending on ripping the flat roof off and going up with a gable roof, extending the ridge line, not increasing the height of the building, not increasing the footprint of the building and housing the stair inside the existing garage. So the only addition that we have is a second-story addition above that flat roof.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can show you that in the photograph.
So, for the resolution, I mean, we need the square, the square footage, right? You've got 748 here, but it's not 748?
No, I think that number must have come from when the contractor filed for building permit. He must have put that in his application. I don't know why. He must have estimated himself, but I did it on the computer and this is accurate.
Okay, so what is it? The square footage? I, you know.
Yeah.
Don't, don't make me guess.
It's 537 square feet. That's the apartment habitable space and the stair.
537 square feet.
That's correct.
Instead of the 748, correct?
That's correct, yes, yes.
Okay.
Total. Total square footage is 537.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so essentially, the owner owns a single-family residence. There's a connector piece. It's a covered walkway that connects the main house to the garage. The garage is unfinished, but when they bought the property upstairs above the garage on the second floor, it's been plumbed for a kitchen and a bath already and the contractor's been talking with the building inspector and the Putnam County Department of Health. The sewer drain that goes from that second floor is already, was already in too and it is connected to the septic tank. And that's something that Greg was interested in knowing about and they just proved it the other day with a video camera going down the line to the tank. And I have some handouts that I can give to you, which are emails from the contractor about the status of the septic and also I have emails from the neighbors in support of the project.[1500.36] And I, I have some, uh, handouts that I can give to you, which are emails from the contractor about the status of the septic, and also I have emails from the neighbors in support of the project.
Okay.
I just received them a couple of days ago, so I can hand them out to you now if you'd like to see them.
All right, I'll hand them out to us now, if you're taking them.
Okay.
So do you have approval for the septic or not, I guess is my question?
Uh, nothing official yet from the health department, but, um, if you could pass that out.
Yeah, well, that, well, that means I can't, you know, we can approve, but I can't give you the okay to build on it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that would be up to Greg, um, and you, you'll see in the, in the emails about, you know, when we were denied, uh, he basically stated that you need to get a special permit from the zoning board because you're on a private right-of-way-
Right.
-and you need Putnam County Health Department approval. You'll see in those emails that the communication between the contractor and code enforcement, uh, code enforcement is favorable in not increasing the bedroom count and, and conveying that to the Putnam County Health Department. That's our understanding based on the communication between the contractor and the building inspector.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is that, like, these last two gentlemen, I'd be able to give them a form, where they can go get a building, but I can't give that to you, because I don't have the approval.
Understood, you, you could give us the special permit, though, but just not the-
No, I, I don't think I can give them the, according, Adam, according to the, uh-
I, and the thing is, we, we can grant a special permit-
Yeah.
-but the actual issuance of the building permit, to the extent it might need-
Yeah, we're-
-board of health approval, that, that'll wait, but that'll come from Greg, you're just before us for a special permit.
Correct, that's our understanding, yes.
Okay, you just give me, let me just give you a minute to work these letters here.
Should we wait till the final approval comes?
No, no, we don't have to, because it's, um, we're just gonna approve for accessory apartment, but he's not gonna be able to get a building, I can't give him this, you know, like, I give those people go tomorrow and get a building permit, he can't.
Yeah, the building, building department won't give us a permit until-
He won't give it, he won't, Greg won't give, give it to him until he gets the approval from the, um-
But if we get the special permit from you, and then we get the health department approval, then he'll issue the permit.
Right.
Yep, that's what he's looking for.
Right.
They could be, they could give him that, he just won't be able to get the permit till they get the board of health stuff.
Uh, I don't know, there was a question today, an answer today.
Yeah, no, that's true, you're just before us for a special-
Yes.
...permit.
If they get it next week.
I mean, theoretically, if for some reason the department, Putnam Health, Health Department says, no, we can't allow this, and you won't get a building permit.
It's our understanding at this time that the building inspector is gonna convey that he's okay with everything the way it is, no increase in bedroom count, so we should get the approval from the health department, no problem.
Okay.
So.
All right, I'm just gonna take, take a minute here, just a minute. Okay, the letters here all seem to be pretty much in favor of the, uh, of the, uh, project. Like I say, I visited, what's about three acres there, close to three acres, that property?
Uh, yeah, 2.895, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, I went and looked at it, so I really don't see it bothering anybody or being a problem to anybody or anything else like that.
It's pretty far off of the road, um, the height to the ridge is 22 feet, um-
Right.
I think we have a distance from the property line to the garage corner is 196 feet, and the garage corner is approximately 150 feet to Hudson Ridge.
Okay.
So it's quite a distance off of the private right-of-way.
All right, now, on this here, 'cause it's just accessory apartment permit, uh, we don't have to, um, go through the five factors, they're, they're not a consideration, correct?
Right, it's just a special permit.
It's just a special permit, so, any questions from any board members? Any questions? Anybody? Anybody there? Any questions? No? Okay.
The only, the only question-
The only question that I have is, what would the homeowner do if it was denied?
Um, well, they're basically, they're just, they're looking for this apartment for Tom's mother, who lives in California, and she visits a couple times a year, so it's really just for visiting family members, they have no intention of renting it out or Airbnb or anything, so it's really just a place for his mom to stay when she's visiting.
So if it was denied, they'd be living, they would be, uh, inside the house with the rest of the family?
Yes, and the second thing is, a lot of times Tom and Karen work from home, and they wanted to use it as kind of like a secondary office, so they, they could have some peace and quiet to work in that apartment, if, if they're both in the house together.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, just gonna make a motion, close the public hearing, get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Sisson, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Take a roll call vote, Mrs. Sisson? I vote to approve. Ms. Lynn?
I'll vote to approve.
I vote to approve.
And I vote to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, you're all set there?
Okay.
No good, here you go, Justin, you can take that, uh, you're all set, then just once you get the, the board of health to be able to vote.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Good night. All right, any, all business, any new business? Who's gonna make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
You do, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's it.